Because that's where the-
No, no. She should have received a separate email from the town clerk with the Zoom meeting at around, I think two o'clock today.
The calendar, which I did first, it was just she and I in the meeting. So I could jump over there and tell her.
Yeah. So yeah, if you want to let her know, she should have the email.
Mayor Protem Senex staff will take care of that for you.
Okay, that'd be great. Yeah, she's over on Google meets. So it was just she and I for a while. It's like this is gonna be a short meeting.
We'll wait. We'll wait for her. In the meantime, the weather report, we're getting a little snow mixed with rain up here. The great blessing of it all is we know it's gonna be really green next week. So wonderful thing.
Recording in progress.
Well, we should have recorded that last comment of mine.
Hey, we're getting some good, we're getting some good rain in Fort Collins.
Good.
Hey, John, I like the beard.
Thank you. Thank you, Marie. Nice to see you.
Nice to see you.
We assume she likes all of it, John, not just the beard.
Well, I know, but the beard's new.
Yeah.
It turns out there's a number of us with beards. I'm just noticing.
Marie, it looks like you got somebody else in the meeting with you.
Oh, yeah. Well, yeah, well, probably lucky I don't have everybody in the meeting with us. There's Twix. There's Sunshine. I can get the pheasants on here, too, if you like, because they're in the kitchen. Stop, go. The other two dogs are outside, so.
Oh, we've got Jody. I see Jody. We are now seven for seven and three for three, therefore ten for ten. Unless there's any objections, I'll go ahead and get things started. We're, we're recording already. A couple of housekeeping items. I did want to make sure and announce in the public forum that we're doing the Zoom meeting out of scheduling necessity. We would have all much preferred to be in the same room together, working together on this, but the complexity of schedules of the 10 trustees and commissioners involved make, made that impossible. It would have been another month or two before we could have made that happen. We felt there was enough expediency in this that we went to Zoom. I know there have been concerns raised about that. That is the reason for it, no other. The microphones, trustees and commissioners, you'll have control over your own muting. And as a result, I'll go ahead and, well, we will go ahead and take the approach of recognizing you to make particular comments when we get to comments and questions sections. So that way we don't have three people vying for the microphone at the same time. So we'll take the raise hand approach to it. We've all received a substantial amount of public comment from merchants, residents, others. A wide variety of input from many of the stakeholders, wide spectrum of commentary. Some of it polarized, some of it with ideas for how to make things better. The, so assuming that everyone has received all that, we've even received some very late breaking stuff. So your email might still have items in it, even as of today. Most of the leftover ones came in yesterday, and hopefully everybody's had a chance to keep up to date on that volume of stuff. This is probably just a fraction of what the county commissioners get in regard to their meetings. So probably easy for them to keep up. And trustees, hopefully you've gotten through all of that. Questions that we direct at other attendees who might be on the meeting will be handled by the town clerk. They will open that attendee for comment. And that individual will have to unmute themselves at their end to reply. Any answers to questions posed by the trustees or commissioners, I ask that folks keep it on topic and not move to other peripheral or tangential topics. And we will navigate through this challenging issue. The goal I think that we all have, we share completely, is to have a highly functioning Visit Estes Park organization at all levels that's taking the right actions to promote Estes Park and Laramie County to invite and nurture visitation while respecting the destination stewardship goals, which are really close to my heart. And all of us, I think. Whatever the decisions that are made, these are going to be made by informed trustees and commissioners out of this group of 10, and the two bodies will then support subsequent steps to that decision appropriately. You've heard me say many times, even when I'm on the losing end of a vote, I say democracy in action and then proceed to support that decision and move forth with it. So we've got a bit to cover. There's three action items on the agenda. I am at this point going to turn it over to trustee Hazelton, who raised the request for this joint meeting. And she will introduce the topic. She's provided good information at a couple different touchpoints. And so most of the information is present, and she'll give a brief overview of where we're at.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I appreciate the time to introduce this. And as, as Gary said, I will keep it brief because I think it's valuable to hear from each of you. I've had my opportunity to share my position and in the variety of pre-meeting materials. So I'll try to keep it quite brief. But first of all, I want to thank everyone for taking the time to meet today. I know how busy everyone's schedules are, so I really don't take it lightly that I requested this joint session. And I very much appreciate everyone taking the time and not just to be here for this next 90 minutes, but all of the work I know that has gone into reading the materials and engaging with the community on this issue. I think it's clear that it's a, it's a hotter topic for our community. So as we've said, you've read my letter and the additional materials in the packet, so I won't belabor the information that I shared there. But I do want to summarize that over my time on the board in the past year, and I indicated some of these comments when we last met in the fall, I have seen issues with policy governance and board operations at Visit Estes Park. And these issues have been compelling enough to bring me to this unpleasant point, to be quite frank. I don't find this enjoyable. I don't think it's enjoyable for anybody, and I really don't take it lightly. So I want you to know that a lot of thought and time and energy and engagement has gone into, to ultimately landing at this point. I also just wanted to state before we start discussing that this is really not personal. I'm not looking to personally go after anybody on the board. I respect all members of the board and their commitment to this community. I think that is a shared value, that everybody is put forth a lot of time and energy into their role. And some of them have even been or are still close friends of mine. And so it's not about the people or the individuals. Again, it's much more about the proper duties and execution of the role, good policy governance on this board, which is something that we have come across before as maybe not everybody here on this, on this webinar, but with Visit Estes Park in the past. So I toyed with the idea of addressing this, but I feel compelled to do it. Because some have pointed this more toward the personal, I think it's worthwhile to clarify that the accusations about my intent in this are, they feel like an attempt to discredit me and perhaps distract from the actual issues. And I don't want to spend a lot of time defending that, but I do just want to state that that is not my intent here. I don't come from a place of ambition or revenge. I've moved on in the past seven years. I've worked a variety of different jobs, including this one, and that's the role that has brought me to this table, not any other reason. So again, I wanted to keep things above the personal, but because I know not everyone knows me as well as some other folks do, I felt it was important to clear that air, and I'm happy to answer any questions about that. Finally, I just wanted to say, as Gary, as Mayor Hall said, I have a very strong desire to see this tax-supported organization succeed. I do not want to see it fail. It is so vital to the economic and broader community health of the Estes Valley and really of Laramie County. They're integral. And I hope today's conversations lead us toward a stronger and more productive board and organization. And it feels obvious to say that how we move forward will set the stage for the future of Visit Estes Park. But again, I want to reiterate, and you could probably identify this through some of my comments in the memo, that I believe we might have a larger structural issue to address here. And again, that's why it's not personal. And so my hope is that today's conversation will lead us toward a, you know, longer term solution to make sure that we aren't having issues like this in the future and that we can really let Visit Estes Park continue to move forward and do the good things that they do for our community. So, and keep future governance issues, you know, from our table, from, from our plate. So with that, I am happy to answer any questions as we go. Again, I didn't want to belabor the, the details of what I had raised, since those were laid out in my initial letter as well as in the memo. But I am happy to answer any questions as people have them. But I want to let folks have time to speak and discuss, again, since my position's been made quite clear. So with that, I'll turn it back to Mayor Hall or anybody. I think, Gary, you might have a plan for how you want to engage folks. I'll hand it back to you, and thank you for the time to be here today.
I do indeed have a plan. First, trustee Hazelton, one question. Do, obviously, when we get to the point of making a motion, if we get to a motion at the end of this discussion, we'll then have the opportunity to have last or further discussion before an actual vote after a motion and a second. Does it make sense to have the motion on the table first for specifics? Or would you rather go through the broad discussion first and see what shape that motion might take?
I think the latter seems appropriate, but if anybody feels differently, I'm happy to, to entertain that. But it feels like a broader discussion seems like a good place to start.
With that in mind, I'm gonna turn to the commissioners first. And so I would open it up to Chair Stevens, first of all, for comments and questions.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, trustee Hazelton. I, I think, I'm gonna turn it over to Commissioner Shadak McNally and then, and then Commissioner Kafalos, and I'll make my comments last, if that's fine.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Board of Trustees, County Staff, Town Staff, County and Town Attorneys. We all appreciate your time today. Certainly, this is an important meeting, and I just wanted to state that I have been following the Visit Estes Park work for more than my term as county commissioner, because I followed the few years beforehand, trying to learn and understand the organization and what it did and how it operated. So I've been listening the last few months and the last few weeks very carefully to everything that's been said and reading, you know, trustee Hazelton's letter and, and listening and trying to understand kind of where people are coming from. I've, when you talk about packets, this is not really large for me, because we have 11,000-page packets lately. And so I just want to say, I've read this document a few times, I've read the 2017 a few times, and I have thought about this over and over again and really wanted to say I, I appreciate the conversation. And I want to say I respect each of your points of view and your perspectives and your concerns. I've thought about this very deeply and thinking about what is really the big picture, which is what's best for the organization and for the Estes Valley and the town of Estes Park, which this organization is supposed to serve to support tourism. So first, I'd like to say a few about a couple of things that, well, more than a couple of things I've been thinking about. You know, first, I value volunteerism. We have over 30 boards and commissions and another 65 public improvement districts that we appoint people to as Board of County Commissioners. I take that very seriously. We interview those folks. We have a lot of policies and, and we really value our volunteers. The Visit Estes Park Board is made up of very hardworking business owners who care about their roles on the board and how Visit Estes Park benefits the community. These are, I know very well, I've spoken to a lot of business owners, I've walked through a lot of businesses downtown. I know how hard the small business owners in Estes Park work. The seasons, seasonal nature of the tourism up there and employees and workforce, all the things that are going on for Estes Park owners is a challenge. And now we have, on top of that challenge, some uncertainty with the park and tariffs and other rising costs, and that weighs heavily on my decision. I want to thank all the people who volunteer and do things on boards for their public service. It's Public Service Appreciation Week. And I think it's interesting that we're talking about this during Public Service Appreciation Week, when a lot of folks give of their time, talent, treasures to help benefit their community and their neighbors and co-businesses that, that work together to make Estes Park and the Estes Valley a place that I have treasured for over 58 years now. I don't want to vilify anyone or the people who are serving or working, whether you're serving on the town board or the Visit Estes Park Board, I want to thank you for your efforts. You all give of your time, and these are hard times and big discussions, and it's been happening for a long time. This, these folks take time away from their businesses and their families to serve on this Visit Estes Park Board. And as I understand it, I've been looking at past, past meetings and reading some of the things in the news. I understand that they're in the process of bringing on an interim executive director on board who has vast experience on setting up new processes and other, maybe things that are needed. I think at this time, the beginning of tourism season, this would be very disruptive to the work to make a change that is this significant right now, especially with the tariffs and some uncertainty going through with the national park and other things. As we're kicking off the summer season, it would be great to have unity and to have a unified message. So I suggest, rather than taking kind of, I think, an extreme option of removing the entire board or even part of the board, I propose that we make our concerns known in this meeting and give the current Visit Estes Park Board and the incoming new interim director the opportunity to consider these concerns, questions, or requests, and have a chance to operate and to, opportunity to address them. This message could come through the minutes of this meeting. I'm sure several are listening in already. And I think there's some things that we have an expectation, that there are some concerns and some questions that we'd like to address and maybe have some changes in the operating plan in some more detail that I can share, that I do see that some of those concerns that have been shared with me through the letters, that maybe there is some more detail and some more things that could be addressed. But I think instead of just kind of removing them without giving the chance to address these things, because I don't think these have been brought forward since I've been on the board, as specific things we want them to fix or address, I do feel this would be a better step. And then we would have this in the operating plan and have this set for, hey, we expect you to do, get these things done by this date. And then we'd have something to measure that, hey, we've, we've shared these things, we'd like to have these done, and then we would have something to go forward. It's always a chance to revisit this as we work together. I do have some other things I'd like to comment that will be for item number three, but I'll save that. And with that, I don't want to talk too much longer. I, I do respect all of you. I do respect the hardworking people of this board. I think this is a really delicate time, and I think we need to really be thoughtful about our, our decisions as of what we do today. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'll hand this over to Commissioner Kafalos.
Thank you, Commissioner Shadak McNally. And I, I don't have any questions at this time. I, I want to make it clear that I'm, I'm here primarily in a listening mode. I have done my best to read through all of the various emails and certainly the memo that trustee Hazelton put together and some of the previous stuff. So I've done my best to do my, my homework here. And so I really want to listen to try to see if we can come to some understanding. I think there's differences of opinion about what is happening with the Visit Estes Park Board, the, the hard work of the staff. I think the point about volunteerism is important. So I, I just want to make that really clear. And I'm also want to acknowledge that as I look at the screen, there are 19 panelists, those of us that I can see your faces, and I believe there are about 41 attendees. So we want to acknowledge and honor their input into this process, some of the folks I recognize from the emails. So I appreciate that very much. I guess I also want to express, I don't know, Mayor Hall, I don't know you that well. I think we're maybe the two vegans of this group. But I, for some reason, I just appreciate your, I don't know, your calm, deliberate leadership in, in some of these matters. So I, I just wanted to express that. And, and I guess the, the last thing I'll mention is I'm hopeful that we can find a, an agreed upon, you know, constructive pathway forward, because I think we, what we can all agree is that we want a, a high-functioning organization that, that supports the betterment of the community. Tourism is very important up there in Estes Park. And, and so I think we can agree on that, and I'm, I'm hopeful and confident that we can move forward with a constructive, some constructive resolutions to the, to the matters at hand. Thank you. Thank you, folks. That's, that's all I have to share at this point.
Thank you, Commissioner Kafalos. I'll be brief, because there are a lot of people I'm sure want to speak, and we'd be nice to get out on time today. I, I appreciate all the people that have weighed in on this issue. And clearly, like Commissioner Kafalos said, there are a lot of participants today. There were a lot of emails, a lot of conflicting emails, honestly. So, you know, it was really hard to sort of parse out, to a certain extent, what, what was happening. What, what I do hear loud and clear, though, is that there are some issues, that there are some issues around transparency, there's some issues around, you know, the board not meeting some of the expectations. And so, you know, I do think it's important to address that. That being said, I, I'm not very inclined to get, you know, get rid of a whole entire board that was duly appointed. I do think that setting expectations is really important, though, so I do want to see that going forward. I would like to see, you know, Commissioner Shadak McNally mentioned the consultant, and, you know, that, that may be a way to right the ship. Certainly transparency around budgeting and what the board is doing is, is really important. And that's what the people of Estes Park and the business owners expect. I did not realize how much passion there was about this issue, and that happens, sometimes that's, can be surprising. But I, I, I really actually love that. I love that people are so engaged, that they, that they really care about this, these issues and the people serving and what the responsibility is and, and what the, what the Visit Estes Park needs to do going forward. I think that that's a sign of a really healthy, healthy community. So, you know, but as I said in the beginning, it is not my inclination to reconstitute a board, to get rid of a board. I would like to see if we can reset expectations for the board and see if that might help with the situation that, that is where I stand. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioners. And Commissioner Kafalos, thanks for the kind comments. And Commissioner Shadak McNally, thanks for reminding us all about the Public Service Recognition Week. We have several staffers on here also. I've been wandering the halls, thanking everyone for their service, but I can't get to all of them, and this way I can cover several at once. Thanks for your service. Let's move to the trustees at this point for comments or questions. And I'm trying to remember how this will work, so I can see everybody and recognize you. If you want to raise your hand would be the best, and we'll go from there. Trustee Frank Lancaster, you have the first hand raised that I saw, so you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Great. Couple things, just to open the discussion, because I've been involved with this for a long time. One, I mean, I agree that the agenda kind of, the agenda jumped right to removing the board as an option to discuss. I think that's a, a little drastic at this point. I think we need to talk about and be on the same page with the issues are before we can say that's the best solution. There could be other solutions. You know, it's analogous to putting a new driver in a broken car and thinking the car's gonna work better. It may not be the, the car, it may be the car itself. I also want to state that this is not about hiring the new CEO. There's been a lot of discussions about that. This isn't about that. Certainly isn't my concerns with it, although that is symptomatic. I do want to raise a little bit of the history here, that this isn't the first time we've been in this situation, and we've sat down with the town board and the county commissioners. I sat through this probably seven or eight years ago. It was a different board, different commissioners, different CEO. But it was eerily similar. We had a citizen that had been appointed to the VEP board that raised some uncomfortable questions about governments and management. That individual probably didn't raise it in the, in the most tactful of ways, to say the least. But they were legitimate concerns, and he was personally attacked and basically bullied off the board, very similar to some of the personal attacks that I've seen aimed at trustee Hazelton. I think we need to be careful that we're not attacking the messenger, but address the message. At that point, the town board and the Board of County Commissioners stepped in. They modified the IGA, placed a trustee and a county commissioner on the VEP board. Just like now, we brought in a third party to look at the operating plan and make structural recommendations, which the result was that 2017 report that everyone's seen. However, those recommendations were never implemented, and through further appointments, the trustee dropped off the board, commissioners appointed someone else, and we've kind of went back to where we were. We're in a very similar position now, different CEO, different board, or lack of a CEO, and different board. To me, excuse me, it indicates an issue with the structure and how we're doing things. When we've got different groups of people coming up with the same kind of not appropriate results, it doesn't reflect on the dedication and commitment of the current VEP members or their, or their, their boards, their, the individual directors. I think their hearts are in the right place. They're working hard on this, and this is not a criticism of them. I think what we need to realize is the VEP board is not an advisory board. And we've worked with a lot of advisory boards, and we all do that, but it's a governing body of a governmental entity that takes in almost $10 million in tax revenue. Three and a half million of that is dedicated to marketing. That's a very different responsibility than all the advisory boards that we're so used to working with. It's, it's kind of a strange model that they're not elected that way, but we have others. Library boards are the same way. The board wears two hats. You know, one is the governing body of a special taxing district, which has some very specific fiduciary responsibilities. But then they also serve as a marketing advisory and sounding board for the professional staff. And these are different roles and different skill sets. And I think as was proposed in 2017 study, there are other alternatives. And there are other models out there. There's the one reported that was proposed by Sandy Hall in 2017 report. But the commissioners, you guys have done some great things in the same area, I think, identifying the same issues. The Slod Waste Advisory Group has a technical committee, and you have a policy committee. So you bring people with the technical skills in that want to work on those ends, and then those who want to do more of the governance on the other end. Behavioral health, same way. You have a policy group and you have a technical advisory group with experts in the field. This is what was proposed to the 2017 plan. This is how Wayveil does their program. You have a governing body, and then you have a marketing advisory board. We have PRPA as a model of representation of elected and technical staff on the Board of Directors from the partner municipalities. And the MPO function is very similar with a policy group and with the technical group with the engineers, understanding that we don't want the engineers running everything, don't want the engineers and the lawyers in charge of everything. We want their input, but there are other things from policy. I do think there are a number of areas where the VEP board has not been fulfilling their fiduciary responsibilities as a governing board. Some of those have been outlined in trustee Hazelton's packet. I have a number of other examples that, that I'm concerned about that I can give if anybody asks. But again, I want to stress, this is not specific to the particular Board of Individuals. It's interesting, we've had this problem with several boards. So I think it indicates that it's a problem with the structure, lack of policy development and training. I do think something is broken here, and it's been broken for quite a while. And I think as elected officials, we have a responsibility to appoint the VEP board, to approve their operating plan. And whatever we decide to do would be irresponsible for us not to address these in some manner. My biggest fear is two or three years from now, we're having another meeting like this because we're in the same position, nothing's been fixed and we're having the same problems going around for a third time. Something needs to be changed. You know, there's that old saying about insanity is doing the same thing over and over again and expecting different results. So hopefully we can have some discussion about some alternatives to address this, to bring some governance policies and improve the governance of Visit Estes Park as a governmental entity and still have the flexibility and the expertise from the community that want to get involved in the marketing that's so important to our community. And I will leave it to that and let someone else take the floor. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Lancaster. Trustee Brown, you have the floor.
I should never have raised my hand right after Frank. Frank has such a vast body of experience and background with all this. I come from a different place in that I've only been here five years. So I didn't experience many of the things that Visit Estes Park went through in the past or even some of our other things, because I know we've had recall elections. We've had entire boards resign, the hospital district board, it all resigned. So I know some of that stuff, but I didn't really live through it. So it's, and I come, I moved here from Iowa that has a very, very different type of governmental structure than we have here in Colorado. We didn't have this plethora of special districts that exist here. And that changes things. It, first of all, it makes some silos that are difficult to overcome. Although, you know, I think we've done a good job trying to overcome those silos. And but also, it requires a lot of volunteerism on these boards that is difficult to get in a community the size of Estes Park. I think we've been relatively successful in doing it, but it's a difficult job. And part of the problem that I see on this, and I've seen this with other special districts, is that most of the people that volunteer for these, they may have been familiar with working for a nonprofit or working with, you know, some charitable thing. Government is different. It's fundamentally different. And I don't think they always realize that when they enter into it or are aware of what the expectations as a government official are. And, you know, we saw that with the fire district, which made a decision in an executive session inappropriately. We have a hospital that won't release a letter of intent for an affiliation with UC Health. We've got, we've got some issues here. And I think some of the issues raised by trustee Hazelton are very valid. You know, the one that really strikes me was that it is my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, trustee Hazelton, that you requested some information with respect to the, both the search for the new CEO and the investigation that was done after that email came in. And that you were told that that was attorney-client privileged and you were not entitled to see that. Well, you're on the board of this organization. You are the client, so that's not a legitimate. I'm an attorney, so I, you know, kind of know a little bit about how this works. And that was upsetting because you can't do your job unless you have complete access to everything that's happening internally. And that's probably the thing that troubles me most about what was said. Because there are a variety of levels of significance of the things that were brought up. Some have higher significance than others. In my mind, that has a number one significance that they've frozen you out from being a board member. And that's really inappropriate, I think. So I do think that there are things we need to deal with, that being one of them. And as I thought over this, my recommendation, my suggestion, and we can later put it into motion if others believe this is a good idea, is that we ask the Visit Estes Park Board to adopt a group of governance policies, hopefully modeled on what the town of Estes Park governance policies are, because I believe those to be quite strong and comprehensive. And, you know, got to credit trustee Lancaster for some of that, I know. And not only is it a comprehensive group of governance policies, but very importantly, the town administrator on a monthly basis reports back on compliance with these things on a kind of rotating basis. There are so many that you can't report all of them in one meeting. But it holds everyone accountable. It shows what the expectations are. And when I went through the materials for this meeting, I just didn't see anything like that in the bylaws or in the operating agreement that really gave any structure to that. So I think it's somewhat a function that we have all these volunteers experienced with nonprofits, but not experienced with government, that, you know, don't understand why these things have to be done the way they do. And it's just a function of that and a function of our, you know, the fact we have all these darned special districts on top of it. So my recommendation is that we, again, ask them to adopt a comprehensive set of governance policies similar to the towns. Maybe the county has similar ones that we can incorporate as well. And then build that, those sorts of governance policies into the, to the annual report or the, what's it called? Not the annual report, the plan.
Operating.
The operating plan, yeah, the operating plan. And that addresses what I think are legitimate concerns that has been, have been raised by trustee Hazelton about governance. They are process oriented. I very much agree with Commissioner Shattuck McNally that the remedy is not removing the board. It's certainly got our attention, you know, so that much is positive about it. But it's not really the right remedy for what the complaint is. The complaint relates to these policies and compliance with policies that are necessary for a public body. They're, you know, and it's not unique to Visit Estes Park. You know, we've seen it with some of these other special districts. And I happen to believe that our town governance policies are amongst the strongest out there and that they serve as a really good model for how things should operate. And some of these special districts would be well advised to adopt similar things since they are public bodies, whether they're appointed or elected. And so anyway, that's my thought on this, where I think we should go with this. Thank you.
Trustee Brown, thank you. Yeah, the echoes with a couple of the commissioners, Shattuck McNally and Chair Stevens. Yeah, there's some echoes of that, but you took it to an interesting level of governance policies. You might also tack on to that ensuring that every new board has governance education at the appropriate time. Trustee Youngland, you have your hand up. Go for it.
Thank you, Mayor. I won't reiterate some of the comments that have already been made, which I totally agree with. I, in reviewing the 2017 report, I really felt it was kind of odd that the recommendation wasn't implemented. I would like to see that implemented. I too agree with Frank that I think the vehicle's broken. And so we need to address some of, some of why those governance issues, policy, fiduciary responsibilities. And, you know, they're great volunteers and that we can't do things without them. But we can't expect perhaps, you know, running your business and knowing that aspect and sitting on a board and they don't have that tool of understanding maybe governance completely and things like that. So I think some adjustment needs to be there for sure. I did talk to town administrator Maholic about implementing those, you know, checkpoints like trustee Brown just mentioned. And I would like to see, hear from Travis again because he indicated that that might, if I recall right, not really able to do that because there's a lot to that. Anyway, I'll let him comment on that because I felt the same way. You know, let's get this education piece going. One of the other thoughts I thought of as well, you know, once, once after the discussion and we hear from everyone, you know, there might be some people that are sitting on the board that would prefer not to participate in the changes or things like that. So I, you know, I'd certainly want to make sure that, like a reapplication process perhaps, that, that, you know, they can reapply to the board. We, to sit on this board, we can re-interview based on some of these issues that we're finding and question, have those as some of our questions to the applicant. And maybe our choices would be different because now things have been brought to us. So maybe, you know, they're willing to be a volunteer in this board, but maybe they wouldn't be the best choice based on, you know, what we're looking for to be able to move the organization in a better direction. So that is one of my thoughts is perhaps to do just a reapplication. So that way we're not picking on out anyone. We're looking at a whole different aspect. So I too, like Commissioner Kavales, want to hear from everybody. So those are just my thoughts at this time and I will pass it back to you, Mayor.
Thanks. And yeah, we also know that organically, we've got some folks that will be coming out of their roles in the not far future on the VEP board, too. I think there was a chart at some point published of the timeframes that people have. So we will naturally get some turnover at that point, too. I do see a couple of other hands raised. Trustee Youngland, did you want Travis to weigh in now or wait until we get through a full round of the trustees?
That's totally up to you, Mayor. I just, I think what he has to say about that, because I think that is a good idea. But I think there was some barriers there that might not be able to implement that.
All right, let's move to trustee Igo.
Thanks, Mayor, and thanks. It's good to see this group working together. I would have to say that reading trustee Hazelton's letter did not raise a concern for me. My interest has been piqued in Visit Estes Park for several years. And it has been piqued because I have a sense that a lot of people don't see the difference between the appointed board and the elected board on who is responsible for Visit Estes Park. So there is a misperception by many in the community that the town board is responsible for the processes of Visit Estes Park. So I have heard, I have gotten a lot of input as part of the business community. So I think that that's where we are entered into this. There's been a little bit of question about that. I do want to clarify that I don't think a change to the board means any employee is protected or at risk. And we've heard very passionately from some staff members at Visit Estes Park on different sides of this issue with the board and should the board be removed? And how do the work conditions change? And again, I've had the opportunity to work with many of them and I like all of them. But there are some very different perspectives. But we're not here to solve the work conditions. We're here to address the board and the performance of the board. So while I think that if the board is removed today, that doesn't protect or put at risk an employee, and I think that's important to note. Now, I do have a concern with bringing in a CEO from out of the community, out of the state, that feels like a fixer that was organized by part of the board that wasn't entirely clear. And when I observe Visit Estes Park board meetings or I'm a member of the public looking in from the outside. So I want to be able to see what the conversation is and what the actions are, where they come from, how the decisions are made. And I don't have a sense that that decision was made clearly and transparently, to use that overused word that we love. I would like to have someone who's familiar with the situation be able to reestablish some leadership for the Visit Estes Park staff and the organization. So I'm throwing all of these issues out here, just things that I've collected over the last month, especially with today and yesterday and the day before, some passionate and almost desperate pleas for intervention from the town board and county commissioners to do something about the situation that feels critical, critical mass right now. It's either at a high of bad or a low of misery. I think there are some substantial and really significant concerns that the staff has. But those significant concerns for me are trickle down from the performance of the board, the performance of the Visit Estes Park board and how they do business, how they handle the money, how they make decisions. I think that the staff, like in other districts in our community, the leadership of the board is pivotal to the success of that organization. So I think some of the strife that I'm hearing in passionate pleas is indicative of how the board is performing for that organization. So that further concerns me. I don't know that taking a vote today to remove the entire board solves the problem. And I would be very hesitant to make that kind of a very big move on the part of this group of elected representatives who obviously represent the interests of this whole area. I do think that we need to establish some boundaries, some expectations for the board performance that will trickle down to the staff. They need to have measurable standards. I've heard it mentioned here already that what are those standards we're measuring by? So I think we need to identify those. And we need to recognize there's a structure problem. A couple of you have said already, it's Plan A, Plan A, Plan A. Over the years, it's not working. So we need to move on to maybe a different approach to this structure, the organization or the solution. So while I am, I'm telling you, I'm hesitant to remove this board. I'm not beyond that decision, depending on the information that I, you know, continue to collect here today. But I would be comfortable with adding oversight to the board, whether that's a commissioner and a trustee, a trustee, whatever that looks like, to enhance the board with some additional oversight to represent the community and the elected body's concerns with a set of standards that they will be able to, or must, will be required to follow. So I will continue to listen with interest here as we go through the discussion and I thank you for this time to speak.
We've had several comments regarding establishing expectations oversight, establishing formal governance policies. So we're seeing an interesting theme form there. As far as the comments that we've received, you know, there is such a polarization of the comments that we've received from the various stakeholders as well as the public. I struggle a little bit with thinking who from among all the stakeholders could bring an objective approach to analyzing the staff and board performance and recommending improvements. And so there may be a value in external objectivity if you bring someone with the right skill set. But that's not a decisive point with me yet. I would like to turn it over. I believe this will get us. this will get us around the horn on the trustees, Mayor Protem Senak.
All right, can everyone hear me? All right, so I I served on the Visit Estes Park Board during my first term as trustee. And well firstly, on a personal note, and not that it's a time and place, but it's the first time that I've seen her. Deb, I know you're here and I just wanted to give you my full condolences. I know this is a difficult time for you and this is really difficult to have to deal with this on top of that. So beside that note, I served two years as a board member and a trustee. At the time, we had two trustees on the board. And I think originally when we talked about business or when we revamped it, and Frank probably has a little more history than I do. But it really was supposed to be run or at least overseen more by the trustees and the commissioners than it has kind of moved to, as far as I'm concerned. One of the reasons we took off one of the trustees was myself, who mentioned to Mayor Koenig that I thought everything was running pretty smoothly at the time. This is about four years ago. And that we probably didn't need two trustees on the board. The my my problem is this is that serving with some of the people on the board, I think they have a passion for it. I really do. I think that just looking at policies on term limits, I almost feel like there are no term limits and there are term limits, but they but people can run the board just one year after being off. And I think that lends itself to particular people who are very strong and very passionate to start running like the district on their on their merits is running the district versus the policy governance, I think that it should be set up as. I'm a true believer in policy governance, and it seems to me that it maybe has moved away from that a little bit. And, you know, for them to be just in charge of policy and financial and not the everyday, you know, motions of the district, it appears like that's that maybe not just the case. One of the problems I have with talking about the different perspectives and thus is that we have one elected official that's on that board, and that's trustee Hazelton. And I have to trust that what she is seeing or is what even what she is feeling about problems there, that they are really are truly problems. You know, there's there's a board of passionate people who are not elected officials. And don't get me wrong, they are passionate and they're volunteering their time and everything's wonderful. But we're sitting there talking about those different perspectives. We have a representative on that board, and that is trustee Hazelton. And so I have a difficulty not backing or not feeling like hearing really totally of what she's saying and that if there are problems. And so do I think revamping the entire board, you know, or wiping out the board and starting over is probably the answer right now, especially with the new CEO maybe coming on board? No, I don't think that. But I think that we have to be careful. I think that they have to go back to the policy governance. And maybe I hate to do that, but relearn themselves on that, if that's not a term, but I like the term anyway. And I really think that maybe changing charters and saying, you know, you're sorry, cap, two terms is two terms. And if you stay off another four years, then get back on. The problem, I think, with any organization is when you have people on there for multiple, multiple years and go off for a year, come back, anything like that, that it tends to, and this is not person, the person doing it. It's just, I think it's just a fact of life. They tend to tend to run things a little bit differently or run a little bit more on a personal level. So I think that they have to look at that for sure, as term limits. I also think that it might be a good time to put two trustees back on that board. I would love a commissioner to be on the board. I really would because I do think that the commissioners and the trustees should be running this board or at least overseeing it better. I understand the commissioners, there's only three of them. So that would be very difficult. So I'm not saying that's necessarily a a must. I would, it's more of a want. I do think that elected officials are the ones that are responsible for this money. And I don't think we have enough oversight. So I think that's part our problem. And our solution to be to maybe have more oversight and not just have, you know, I didn't think having a meeting with the county commissioners and the trustees quarterly solves anything. Honestly, we're talking about just the the plan, because operational plan, because operational plan does not go through some of the problems that trustee Hazelton's saying. So I think having at least two trustees on the board. Love to have a commissioner on the board, but I get that. But I think that oversight is is probably necessary at this point. I think that there has been a move away from governance. I was part of two of the Visit Estes Park CEO searches. And it's difficult when you we don't have the right person. We thought we had the right person this last time, and it wasn't a long term right person. I'm concerned there may be still influence by other for past employees. And that's why I've heard from some people, and I don't like that at all. But I don't, I can't substantiate that. But I don't like that, even the the thought of that. Let me see what else I was talking about. Well, I agree with trustee Brown, the fact that there had been anything that the board has had an attorney talk about that was not shared with the entire board. I did understand at one point there was a comment that it was above the board. There is nothing above the board. The only above the board would be the trustees and the commissioners. But, you know, anything that's shared with one board member personally, I think should have been shared with all the board members. And one board member shouldn't have to go searching for the information. I think that's a problem right there. And if there's a few board members, I don't care if it's the president, I don't care if it's the vice president, you know, I've been president of the school board. You can't run a board by having information to a few of the board members. And I think that's a real problem. And so I think that needs to be solved right off the bat. But I definitely think more oversight by the trustees and the commissioners is is really necessary at this point. So that's all I have to say.
Commissioner Shattuck McNally.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I hear a lot about the 2017 study, which is eight years old. And there are some great recommendations. There's also some warnings in there about the pros and cons of having multiple committees. Like I said, I did my homework here and I went and dug around the website. There is a 2022 approved board policy manual with Board of Directors Governance, Accountability Transparency, Conflict of Interest, New Board Orientation and Code of Ethics. It also was put together by the law firm of Lyons and Gaddis from my hometown of Longmont. I know these groups well. There's agendas, it's the several page Board of Directors Governance. I think that was addressed. And I don't know, maybe you all haven't dug around their website, but this is a really interesting document. It's something that was recommended in 2022, this was done. Also, when we talked about, one of the recommendations was a more robust operating plan. I feel, you know, have looking back at old operating plans, and I have been watching this even before I was a commissioner, that there was a short operating plan, and I know there was controversy before, and I want to speak to that in a second. But as I've seen since we've been on this, and I think we should not be vilifying any previous employees or current employees or anything like that. Also, I do think that when it comes to, and I all do respect trustee Hazelton. I don't know if all the things about what happened or what it's, we don't have the full picture. We haven't heard from all the sides. And I think we should be really careful that we have, as as the mayor said, polarizing accounting, and we have to really focus today on what's in front of us and on the agenda. But when I see the operating plan, it has grown from a few pages to over 100 page document. And I felt that as a board of county commissioners, we asked for more things in their operating plan, and I saw those were addressed and added. Is it perfect? No, there's always room for growth and and innovation, and we should always seek to do every every time we have an operating plan or the board of county commissioners. I won't speak for you as a town trustees, but we should always look to do better every year. Conditions are changing. We've had COVID, we've had, you know, natural disasters, we've had wildfire. And 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 this area has to adjust and be nimble. As I understand it, the history, there was a board of county commissioners on us, and it was removed, I believe, in what I've been looking into the history, and I could have this wrong, but they were that board of county commissioner was removed by the town trustees. So I was going to suggest, and this was something I was going to address in number three, that I would like to see us have a little more equal representation from the county and have a board of county commissioners and also have some folks who are more involved from the county as we go through this transition. So I do feel that there's an interim step before we go into talking for a long period of time because we're already an hour into this that there's a lot of things that we have suggested that maybe need to be addressed. But I do think it comes down to the first step, which I believe is addressing the intergovernmental agreement, which has some things in it that I think need to be upgraded and modernized. I think there's certainly some things as from the county, we'd like to see change that makes us uncomfortable. We have our governance structures as a board of county commissioners when we came on in 2020. We went to the through the whole board of governance for our board and how we treat staff. And we took eight, well, was it 18 months, over a year to write that together and to work on it together to make sure we had that right. So I don't think we should rush that. So I think the first step and what we're missing here today is maybe we need to have our staff and our county attorneys go back to the I G A, because that's where it has to go first, where we are agreeing by two bodies. How are we going to work together and how are we going to operate and how what kind of expectations we have to work together on this? And then I'm sure the board, the Visit Estes Park Board is hearing our concerns and questions. And then we have set some clear expectations and how we can work together and work on how we want to set these clear expectations in this operating plan. They are in the middle of getting ready for this busy tourist season, but I think we need to go back to the very simple first step, which is handing off this kind of intergovernmental agreement review to our county attorneys and our staff and let them come back with a very objective and very unbiased opinion about what needs to be fixed. And I do think adding a commissioner, Mayor Protem, is a great idea. I've been, I was waiting to suggest that. So thank you. I agree with you on that. And I do think that today, I think first things first is we should really address the I G A needs to be updated. And we need to come to terms as two two different governing bodies, how we're going to work together and on how this goes forward. And I appreciate the time, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
I think that's a very good point. The independence of item three from items one and two gives us the opportunity to determine whether we have a consensus in a direction that you're describing, Commissioner, that if if generally or universally on these 10 members here, if if we all feel that a review of that I G A by our respective staff, our respective legal staff, and ultimately back to these boards is the right path to follow, regardless of what action we take on one and two. I guess I do want to get back to the trustees who've had their hands raised, then I'll go in recency order. But without having an action in front of this group, I would be curious as we get back into that round with the trustees, if in general there is a consensus to move forward on an I G A review as Commissioner Shattuck McNally mentioned. I'm in favor of that approach. With that being said, the one who has not had the floor for the longest time of my trustees is Kirby Hazelton. Trustee Hazelton, you have the floor.
Mayor, thank you, but I I do want to defer to Cindy because she's been waiting longer than I have. So I appreciate it, but I'll let her go and I'll wait your turn.
Okay, I was trying to do it based on recency, but there we go, trustee Youngland.
Thank you, Mayor and Kirby. I'll make this brief. I want to reiterate Mayor Protem Senak's view, two points. I'm a firm believer in in the term limits and the recurrence of multiple people just waiting out a year and coming back. I think we need fresh blood and fresh eyes on this. Number two point with trustee Igo's comment about putting a trustee on the board, we have one. We have, that's why we're here today. Because I truly believe that Kirby has tried to bring attention to these issues and has come up with roadblocks. And so I think we need, there's two sides to every story. I get that. But as a trustee, when you when you're on the board and you're expressing concerns and requests and those aren't being met, that's our, that's a huge issue. And just having a trustee on there, we have that. That's our problem. It's brought to us concerns. We've read those emails. So you know, putting another one on there, that's fine, but I think the picture is bigger than that. And I think we need to, yes, it's going into busy season. But I, there's been time. I feel that this has been brought up and 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 having issues for months, and there's been no improvement. And I would love to have trustee Hazelton maybe speak a little bit on on how long it's been since she's been bringing this up because I feel the time has already been given for improvement to start showing that, oh, gosh, we better, you know, clean up our act, we better start looking at our governance, you know, just all those, and it doesn't seem like that's happening. So if you could just address that, too, that would, I think, help for me anyway. Thanks.
Mayor Protem, you still have your hand raised. I don't think you mean to, if you want to take that down. Trustee Hazelton.
Thanks, Cindy. That's actually a good segue for some of the comments that I've jotted down. But first, thank you, everybody, for your perspectives. It's really helpful to hear and I just appreciate the honesty and, you know, the the ability of everyone to kind of look at this from different angles and and bring your perspective to the table. It's exactly what I had hoped for for this session because I have felt, you know, in my role as the single liaison and a voting board member, a little bit on an island in terms of trying to motivate the right kind of positive change at Visit Estes Park. And so and the receptiveness to that. And so to hear feedback, both, you know, supporting some of the comments that I've made and also bringing new questions and ideas and thoughts to the table is extremely valuable. It feels it feels really productive to me. So I appreciate it, what everyone's had to say. Cindy's comments led right into some of the the notes that I had jotted down, which is, and and Bill mentioned this as well, but you know, I do think we have two kind of triggers as a board or as a governing body over Visit Estes Park. One is our approval of the operating plan every fall, which is kind of a precarious trigger because that operating plan's approval is directly tied to the district's ability to collect taxes that now include the 60 funds, right, that are so valuable to our community. So that option is quite, we want to be really careful about that because not, you know, being able to exercise change in that or maybe approve or not approve could end up being a serious impact on our compete, on our community. The other trigger is this, you know, discussion, our ability to appoint or remove board members. So Bill kind of touched on this, not that I was looking for, you know, the crack of the whip attention moment, but that, you know, this is this is one of our triggers in our ability to make sure that board is doing the job that they need to do. And I discussed this with the mayor that, you know, I probably should have been clear that I, you know, in my memo and in my communication, that saying, you know, I'm not trying to come in and say the whole board has to go, that's the only solution we can consider. And and that's it. That is not my intent at all. My intent is to trigger the conversation of how I believe and this has gotten to the point of of serious problems. And so that's, I do appreciate that we've had it, had this discussion here. I, you know, Cindy's right, we have talked about this before. We talked about it during the operating plan discussion in September. I have talked about it with the Visit Estes Park Board more than once, and most recently as our April board meeting, we had a discussion about proposals that were brought to the board that were not board directed. We had the discussion that there were meetings with the proposal generators and certain board members, but not the full board. And there was a lack of, there was almost a surprise that that might be a problem, that some board members had had information that others didn't, which again indicated to me some of what we've said here, that there may just be, you know, a need for more education or for better structure or for better guidelines. I, at the beginning of this, and still feel this way that whatever brings a solution that best serves our community by means of a functioning Visit Estes Park, I'm all for it. I am seeking the cure, not I am seeking the cure, not a Band-Aid. And I think that's what we need to charge ourselves with as a governing body here is if we put things into, you know, into our IGA review, which Commissioner Shattuck McNally, I totally agree this, we really do need to revisit that. I think there's just naturally some things out of date in that too. But whatever it is we define, we need, that needs to be, you know, held accountable. We need to see the effects of that change. Otherwise, like Frank said, we're going to be here a couple of years from now. And I don't even want to be here a couple of months from now. I'm exhausted from, from this. And I, I think there's a, a piece of this too, that I want to clarify that my, I have opinions. Maybe I'm what might be a good fix for this. And we have a, we have a personal rule in our household that sometimes I have to say, do you want me to fix this? Or do you want me to just listen to this? Because I'm always a fixer and I have a lot of opinions about the fixing. But what's not an opinion is the facts that I have been able to witness about how the board is operating, things like information being withheld, you know, lack of transparency, the, there are things that are, that those are not an opinion, they're just, they just are. And so ultimately what I'm hoping for, and maybe the first step is this evaluation of the IGA. I think some of these ideas that have come forward today are really great. And I am not tied to wiping the full board, but what I am tied to is a cure and not a Band-Aid. I'm looking for solutions that we are not here again. And that so that our organization can be healed, move forward and continue to support our community of Estes and of Laramo County. We have so many, you know, we continue to see issues come forward within the organization itself now at a staff level that I believe are symptomatic, as Frank said, of a lack of good policy governance for quite some time now, even before my time on the board. So that's, I, in the spirit of heading us toward that, the solution oriented discussion, that's, I, I'm all for it. I'm not tied to one solution by any means, but I am looking for something that actually has impact. And I know that's where we're all at. I feel extra passionate about it because I'm, this is taking years off my life. So I'll leave it at that and I, I appreciate everybody's comments. Thanks for sharing them so far.
And very good comments, trustee Hazelton, and indicative of that need for the IGA review. And I, I would have a quick question for town attorney Dan Kramer. Briefly, because I would like to get to the point of action here before we get to a point where we might lose people. The town attorney Kramer, do we need a motion on item three or just a good consensus from the group to begin taking steps forward on an IGA review?
Mr. Mayor, before he answers that, I'm ready to make that motion if he says that's what we go forward. That's just to let you know, I was going to make that motion.
And, and I'm okay with a motion. I, I don't think there's any reason why we couldn't do a motion and we just need a consensus. So go forward.
Unless the town, I don't want to cut off the town attorney, but I was ready to make that motion. Mr. Mayor, I propose that we just focus on item number three that I think we could, with interest of time, but also I think this is, a lot of these items warrant a longer discussion, but I move that the, that we task as a, as a joint body, visit, I'll make this simple. I move that we task both the county attorney from the, and the town attorney along with town and county management and county administration work together on addressing the IGA and updating it and bring it back before two boards. And also move that we, there has been some expectations and comments regarding budget and governance and bring this back in the operating plan, that they maybe synthesize some of that and bring those back. It's expectations to send to the board, Visit Estes Park Board to add to the operating plan, to bring forward at such time and possibly, I don't want our meeting is October. And that's my motion.
And recognize we will go back, of course, to item one for appropriate discussion and closure on that. But do I have a second to that motion?
A second. Trustee Brown.
So trustee or Commissioner Shattuck McNally made the motion to move to a review of the intergovernmental agreement regarding Visit Estes Park with our various attorneys, our various town staff, and I see town attorney Kramer. I recognize you.
Thank you. And I'd also look toward county attorney Rasu to see his opinion on this. The way I understand it, we have a joint meeting here today, but we don't actually have a joint body. The only vote that I read out of the IGA that would require a vote of the joint bodies put together would be a vote for removal. So I, I think that it would still be two separate bodies making requests of their two separate staffs and attorneys to consider this. And then we would potentially come back together or potentially work through any IGA amendment separately and approve them separately in the future. But I don't think we need to take a, a formal vote as a joint body, because I don't think there technically is a joint body.
And would a consensus be sufficient?
That would be sufficient for me. I, I would have some questions about the task assigned to me and other town staff. But, but consensus absolutely is enough for us to work on this.
It's either that or we go to two separate votes and I would need a second from the county commissioners on Commissioner Shattuck McNally's, and I would also need to have a motion and a second from the trustee. But I, I will ask, is anyone opposed to a consensus across this group of 10 to take steps forward to a review of the IGA? Hearing none. I think we have our consensus town attorney that we will begin steps toward a review. And while we will move forth with other discussion, and do you have another question there?
I do. I want to get as much clarity as I can as to this task. I see other trusts, I see trustees have their hands up. So I want to make sure they have a chance to get in on the conversation too. But the, the specific issues that I've heard to look at in the IGA are potentially term limits and anything that is out of date. I don't expect just looking over the IGA as a general matter will get to the root of some of these issues we're talking about today. If there are governance issues, we'll probably need to have more conversations, possibly a study session about how we might want to address governance issues in the IGA. Unless you want me to just take a stab at it, but I'm not entirely comfortable doing that if I'm not sure I'm on the same page as you all.
I, I see this as an iterative process, but certainly the themes that have been the strongest are making sure we have appropriate policy governance so that the VEP board is operating by similar policies for governance that the town board does and likely Laramo County. And that we also have a process by which that is reviewed and there is oversight from trustees and commissioners in regard to that review on a regular basis. So we don't go off the tracks. Or if we do, we find our way back right away through that policy governance. That's the general summary I'd have for it. And with that, we also have county attorney, Rasu?
Very good. Thank you.
Go ahead.
I would just add to, to build off of town attorney Kramer's comments. My perspective on this from my board and where I will be looking for consensus is it is not to so much as draft or propose a governance structure for the, which is a separate governmental entity, but to talk more about how the town and the county can set expectations for Visit Estes Park on what type of governance structure we would look for, or we would want them to consider implementing. And so I want to make clear with my board that I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't see it as my role to work on draft policy governance for an entity that's not my client, which is the VEP. And instead would be to set standards and expectations that can be reflected in the IGA. So if, if that's the, the direction that we're all agreeing upon, I think confirmation of that would be helpful for me.
I, I think you've stated it appropriately. Those expectations are the most important. What shape they take ultimately in formalizing and policies that come from us up here in Estes or however we shape those, that'll be the content. But the overall overarching expectations are the key part. Trustee Brown, you've had your hand raised the longest.
I will be brief, but I, you know, I know that this is all about governance and, and the three issues. But I do think there's kind of an elephant in the room that needs to be acknowledged and dealt with in the course of dealing with this. We have a staff of Visit Estes Park that is really in turmoil at the moment. We have certain of the staff leadership promoting a particular candidate for the CEO position. Others within the staff feel like that shouldn't be happening from the staff standpoint. It's a decision of the board. There's, there's also quite a bit of conflict between the current board and Kirby for sure. I, I do appreciate Kirby bringing up these issues because I, I very much believe process is really important in this. But you know, there's been quite a, a difficult relationship, I think, between Kirby and the rest of the board members. And, and so as we deal with that, you know, we've got to be cognizant of those issues and how what we're doing affects those. They're, they're not all our choices. Certainly, you know, some of the issue with the staff is a function of a CEO needing to intervene and do something to fix that. We're not going to be able to do that. On the other hand, the thing between the board and Kirby, I'm not sure how that should shake out. Maybe it's an additional member, maybe it's a replacement. I, you know, I, I don't want Kirby to think that what she did was inappropriate, because I don't think it is. I think maybe asking for the, you know, raising the issue of the board, whole board resigning was a little perceived by some to be a little over the top. But you know, I, I'm very much in line with her about getting the process right. And again, I think it's kind of a function of where all these people came from. It's partly the term limits, it's partly that they, their experience prior to this has been on nonprofit boards and they don't understand the public duties that they have. And you know, it's not that they don't intend to discharge those duties. They may not fully understand them. So I, I just think we need to understand that it's not just a matter of dealing with the, the governance things. We have to insist on management dealing with some of those underlying issues and how they are going to be resolved.
Thank you. Trustee Lancaster.
Yeah, just a couple of points I want to make. Just one is a clarification. The town board does not have the authority and never has to remove a county commissioner from the board. That had to be done either voluntarily by Commissioner Donnelly or by the rest of the board at that time. But Commissioner Donnelly was not a town board appointment, so that, that wasn't there. I just wanted to clarify that. The other thing is, you know, that it appears there are some policy governance things out there for the town board or for the Visit Estes Park. In fact, I finally found them on their website. I couldn't get through to them for a long time. What's interesting is I was on the board for about a year. Was, those were never shared with me. There was never any orientation. The holding accountable that's normally done through policy governance was never handled at any of the board meetings I was at for that year period. So policies are only good if they're implemented and followed. So I think we need to look at that governance part, relook at those policies. Yeah. In addition to looking at the IGA, maybe something the IGA can kind of put some emphasis on that. But maybe having more of a presence from the elected officials on the board can hold the board accountable for that. And you know, the C, some CEOs, I think we've had a couple that haven't been familiar with what the role is of a CEO. They were new to the job. And either intentionally or unintentionally didn't share that information. But that was interesting that I was on the board for a year and it was never discussed and never brought up in any way. I did want to mention a little bit that the, the town board governance policies are built pretty much wholly around Laramo County's governance policies. So those kinds of things tend to get spread around a lot. And I know Laramo County hopefully has adopted it. I know it made some changes since that time. But those policies were based almost entirely on what the commissioners had adopted and Laramo County had done before. So both bodies should be familiar with that and how it works and moving forward. That's the only thing I wanted to mention there. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor Pro Tem Senak.
So I couldn't agree more with trustee Lancaster. When I was on the board, really policy governance was never mentioned. And granted, school board was mentioned almost every single meeting. Town board is mentioned a lot about policy governance. I don't think it's, it's totally being followed from what I saw. That doesn't mean the people that are, that they are not doing a great job, or like I said before, passionate about it. I think those are really important things. And this is more of a question than a statement. I'm not a hundred percent sure the IGA is really the problem, but if we're going to be looking at it, I, I would feel comfortable, and this is a question for the rest of the people here, that if we had some, be it two trustees, maybe a commissioner, those look at it versus just the attorneys. Because being a board member is different than being an attorney, no offense to the attorneys. No offense to Bill Brown, who's both. But you know, I think that we are the ones responsible for this board. We just are. And so if we're not looking at the IGA and maybe make it a little subcommittee, you can't do it with 14 people or 19 people. You can't do that, but you sure can do it with three or four. And so to make a little subcommittee to look at that, I think is more important to me than, than the attorneys, although the attorneys obviously would have to, to buy off on it. So I think that's really important. The very last thing in the entire world that I would suggest would be removal of trustee Hazelton from that board. Even the, the board of VS, VisiSP has a whistleblower's policy. And whether or not everybody believes in everything that she said or don't believe that it's not, it's not even a point. The point is that she's brought up concerns. And if we replace her, that sends the wrong message, a hundred percent. So I, I would be standing up screaming at the highest verbal voice in my voice in every newspaper in the world, if, if we even thought about doing that at this point. I don't think you remove a whistleblower, you find out what is the root of the problem. So that's my thoughts.
Thank you. Trustee Igle.
Thanks, Mayor. So this is, we are into 90 minutes on this and Kirby's statements about not putting a Band-Aid on this and figuring it out, a more long-term solution. We've got to do that. We have a responsibility meeting today and there's a tremendous amount of interest in this because this issue has had a tremendous impact, not this month, for the last several years. The, the concept of removing a trustee from a difficult situation is the trustee's decision, in my opinion. So because that was brought up, I have to say that if trustee Hazelton says, maybe I'm the problem. Maybe I should find something else to do. That's her prerogative. But I don't think that we as a board, I am not comfortable removing a trustee from a difficult position. And I appreciate that trustee Hazelton would bring this up, take the heat, lose the sleep, lose years of her life and take some action on this. So I, you know, I am in a position in this moment after listening to all of you, that I think we need to make a decision here that is dramatic and decisive that will give a fresh perspective to Visit Estes Park. I'm not comfortable bringing in the CEO in the way that it has been done. He may be the right guy. Any feeling right now that Any feeling right now that this is, it doesn't pass this, the sniff test? Uh, that there's any relationship to any prior management of Visit Estes Park. We, this has got to be on the level above board and very clean. And it is not currently that way. And I believe there are decisions by the Visit Estes Park Board that have put us in this situation. So I, I, uh, I think that we need to make a decision on whether that board is replaced or parts of that board are replaced. And we need to answer to the community and to the staff that we are willing to make those tough decisions today. On what the future is. So that may be a change. That may be a dramatic change. And uh, I think that we should probably take a vote on that issue uh now before we run out of time and more people leave.
Yeah, we're, we'll need a uh motion on that. I, I would like to turn it back uh to Commissioner Kafalos who, and uh. Mayor Protem, you have your hand still up. Perpetual hand. Uh, Commissioner Kafalos.
Uh, thanks, mayor. Uh, just a quick comment. I, I want to make sure we don't lose sight of this and, and I will have to leave soon. Because I have another Zoom meeting, Parks Advisory Board at five thirty and I need to get home. But it's, it, the, the matter of expectations and what I was hearing about. Um, uh, you know, ma- having, making sure that folks have the proper skill sets. You know, to understand their response fiduciary responsibilities and other things. I think we should also include. A review of the application process. I mean, has anyone looked at the application to be on this uh Vis- Visit Estes Park Board? Because it may be time to change those questions and I don't even know what the process is. Uh, you know, who makes those decisions? So I think that's really important in terms of how we uh establish our expectations. And it gets back to Kirby or trustee Hazelton's comment about a cure, not a Band-Aid. It seems to me we need, we probably need to improve the, the application process. And the discernment process of who's actually going to serve on this visit, you know, this recon- potentially reconstituted. Um, uh, that Visit Estes Park Board, a governance board. Thank you.
Uh, thanks. And yeah, that also seems to play into item three in the move forward to review the whole process. Do I have a motion that we can consider on item one?
Yes, I was going to make that motion, mayor. I would like to make a motion to reconstitute. Um, this board and I would like to do it through, um. A reapplication process for everyone. So. Um, that way we can look at the questions. Um, we can interview all the candidates. Um. You, you know, hopefully they all want to be interviewed. If not, that's okay. But just to redo the interview process and move forward, I think that, um. So that's my motion.
Do I have a second on that motion?
I'll second.
Uh, we had a motion from trustee Youngland. I did not hear or see who the second was from.
Who was Marie?
Oh, sorry, here's me.
Uh, I have uh county attorney rescue lifting his hand.
I just want to clarify that this is a vote by the town council and not the board of county commissioners.
Uh, I, I thought that the ten of us voted on these matters and you had to have six out of ten.
Um, my, and I, and I'll let your, the town attorney comment as well, but my reading is that. The only joint action that the two boards can take together is the removal of board members.
So I guess that's a question of clarification for the member who made the motion. Uh. Trustee Youngland, do uh, should we interpret that as removal of all the members followed by reappointment after a. An interview and application process?
Well, yeah, my thinking was if we could interview them based on new criteria, we look at the questions. Um, and you know, maybe, you know, all of them will reapply. Maybe they'll all be uh kept in, you know. Uh, put in their seats uh, uh, or kept in their seats, or maybe, you know, half of them will reapply. Um, so I'm not sure how you want to interpret that. Um, other people can also apply. It doesn't have to be just the current board members, but um. I would like, I would hope that they would reapply the current board members, but that way we can specifically ask questions. And gear our decisions on who is the board based on, on governancy with their, you know. Uh, if their understanding of that, just the whole picture needs to change. And I think it needs to start with the hiring or the bringing onboard uh part of that. That makes sense.
It sounds to me as though that's a full removal and reapplication. In which case this body as a group could vote on that. That sounds like a full removal to me. Uh, try, uh, town attorney Kramer, additional comment?
Uh, mayor, I could see it one, one of two ways. Uh, it, you, as the, as the chair, you can interpret the motion. Uh, and I think that's a fair interpretation. Another way of doing it would be to request. Uh, reapplication from all the current members without removing them at this time. And if there were to be any removal, it would come later.
Interesting. Uh, trustee Lancaster, do you have a comment? We, we are running short of time, but we will lose Mr. Kafalos.
Um, it seems like the, this would probably be more appropriate to just apply to town appointees. If the town's going to vote on it, then, then all of them particularly if it's reapp- reapply. And then if the county commissioners felt they wanted to do the same thing, that would be their decision. But these are separate appointees on this board. Um, and if we're not going to remove them and just ask them to uh reapply or to resign and reapply, that should be done by each entity separately.
Uh, Commissioner Shattuck McNally.
Yeah, I was just going to, I kind of, um, you know, align a little bit with Frank there that I feel like we should, we've been time out processed. And I feel like we only have two things we can do and one is to remove board members or not. And I appreciate trustee Youngland's um thought on this, but I think that kind of um. Complicates and goes into another area because we haven't agreed on criteria or even agreed about letting them reapply. And I don't know if that's something we can do. And then, then there would be two separate things and I think it's going to complex. And um, and if we want to reconstitute how many are on the board and all that stuff, that's a whole nother questions. And so I feel like this has to be a very plain uh motion with, within the process about removing or not. And, and that's kind of what I feel like that's the only thing we have wiggle room on there. And then that other idea would maybe have to come with. With discussion and the I G A and how that looks going forward, because I don't know if we can even agree to criteria because we're out of time. That's just my thoughts. Thank you. I appreciate your, your um, um, idea though, um. Commissioner Youngland, but I just wonder if it's just a little, maybe a little too much for today. Thanks.
I, I agree. Uh, given the um, direction that has led us to this point. It would seem to me that the motion should represent a removal of the full board and movement from there. Uh, or not. Trustee Youngland.
Um, maybe I'll just re- revise my motion. I move to, um, re-. Remove and, and open applications for the uh town of Estes Parks appointed board members only. Does that make it more clear?
Uh, that's fairly clear. Do we have a second to that revised motion?
But I'm, I just, mayor, I just don't know if we as board of county commissioners can say we open it just to the town. It seems like remove the whole board. We still have that other question. I feel like that would have to be a separate town board, um. Thing. I just, I just don't, you know, I'm saying for, I just think it's kind of complicates it. I'm not, I'm not trying to be argumentative. I just think we're making it a little, a little um, comp- more, little, little, um. Uh. Gray area that we may not want to go into.
Trustee Youngland moved to remove the four board members that are town appointed. Not to remove all six. There, there are two board members who are uh county appointed.
What I really wanted was to be able to have everybody reapply because I think we need to revisit. The questions that are asked of these board members or the applicants. To make a better selection of. Who we want seated there and their abilities. So I don't know how to get there, but that was my intent. Um, was to revisit that in some form or another.
Trustee Brown?
I'd like to call the question on the motion and we need to make a decision here. Uh. I don't care whether it's just the town board or everybody, but with her amended motion, I guess it's the town board. That would vote only on this and I think we need to come to some resolution of that.
Is there any comment from the two attorneys prior to voting on the motion in front of us?
Well, we don't have a second yet, mayor, just to give you that.
Yeah, well, well, we'll go to that, but uh any comment from either of the attorneys? Is that a valid motion?
Mayor, I can take a crack at it and then uh county attorney rescue can follow up. Um.
Could someone please, could you please restate the motion? It's not clear to me what exactly we're talking about at the moment.
I can restate trustee Youngland's motion, I believe. Uh, trustee Youngland moved to uh remove the four. Appointees on the board that were made by the town of Estes Park. And allow applications for their open positions. Including reapplication by those candidates if they desire. Is that correct, trustee Youngland?
Yeah, I wanted to do the whole board, but it seemed like there was a problem with that. So I went with just Estes. So I will refer back to the attorney on that. Um, I just would like to have everybody re-interviewed, but um, yeah. Maybe I'll just resend. My motion altogether and, and maybe have some clarity before we move forward by the attorney, please.
Uh, town attorney Kramer.
Thank you, mayor and trustee Youngland. So for better or worse, section five point fourteen. Of the current I G A makes it the job of the collective members of both bodies to remove any member or any number of members.
Oh, okay.
So it could be, whether it's all town appointees, all county appointees, some of each, all altogether. Removal requires six total members. And you know, that's something that we could revisit in the review of the I G A. But right now that's where it stands and that's how this motion would be uh determined.
Thank you for the clarity, trustee Youngland. In that case, since we still have the combined boards there. Your motion could be removal of the entire board. And. Opening that board for reapplication by any candidates.
That sounds like what I would like, please. Thank you, mayor.
Uh, you want to make that motion?
Yes, I would like to move that the removal of all board members. With the uh understanding that they are all able to reapply and um. That's it. Yes, thank you.
Do, do we have a second? Uh, Mayor Protem, are you seconding?
No, I'd actually like to table that motion. I'd give my substitute motion to table that motion until we work on the I G A. Um, I, I think that um, in all, in all respect, trustee Youngland, um, I actually think it's really important. But I think to not have the I G A uh maybe looked at by a, a small committee or fixed. Um, doesn't fix the problem and then we end up with no people on the board. And so um, I, I, I would make a substitute motion to table that motion if that's, attorneys, help me with this, please. Um. To, until we work on the I G A.
I, I think, uh, I, I didn't want to have town or county attorney uh rescue uh ignored. Uh, he did have a comment in the middle of that discussion. But uh, I would probably need advice from town attorney Kramer again as to how to handle that. If we have that substitute motion on the table, do I have a second to that substitute motion? To hold on the removal until we have uh worked through a review and update of the I G A. Do I have a second on that substitute motion?
Maybe attorney Kramer can help me. I don't know. I think that motion would just. Fail and we would just attend to it later. Is that? If we need to make that motion, I'm happy to be the second, but I think by process, attorney Kramer, can you correct me if I'm wrong? We could, Cindy's motion could fail and we could pick it, commit to picking it up at a later date.
Correct. In fact, that, that motion was never seconded, I, I don't believe, uh, as it was most recently made. So that's not a formal motion on the, on the table at this point. We could just say we're going to pick up that conversation later.
So those are our options. Uh, we can, uh, can I go back to the initial motion, town attorney Kramer? And ask for a second or does the substitute motion uh proceed that?
We're getting very technical, mayor, but I don't think that the, that there's a, a proper substitute motion yet because there's no second on a primary motion.
Ah, got it. Uh, what, what is my next step, town attorney Kramer?
Is there any second to trustee Youngland's motion? Would anyone like?
Is there a second to trustee Youngland's motion?
We'll second it.
Uh.
Trustee to the original Youngland motion.
Are there any further comments on that?
Yes, I'd like to make a substitute motion, mayor.
All right, uh, your substitute motion?
Table that conversation until we go through the I G A. That would be my substitute motion.
Is there a second on trustee or mayor Protem Sinak's substitute motion?
I'll second it.
Is that trustee Lancaster who seconded?
Yes.
Uh, is there any other conversation on this action?
Mayor, I have a question about the I G A review. What's the expected timeframe on that? Anyone?
My intention, since I'm on the town side, since I'm the one who would primarily be tasked with this. Would be to look it over with other town staff and come to the town board at a study session soon to make sure we're on the right track about that. Um.
Yeah, October is too far away for, I think that we need to find a resolution in the next couple of months. Is that real- realistic?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, and has that motion been seconded? Other conversation? Uh, Chair Stevens, did you have a comment?
Yeah, because this motion is different. I don't know if we can vote on this motion. It seemed like the only motion that we could vote on in the count, at the county level was to whether or not to remove board members. So. Um, while I appreciate this conversation and do want a review of the I G A. Um, and uh, think that there's, that, that, there is work to be done. Um, I probably. And the rest of my, the board will not be voting on this one. So, but I think there is consensus that this is what folks want to do. And while we can't take a, you know, a formal vote, I think that. Uh, you know, and I can, we can hear from the other commissioners, but I, my understanding of, from the conversation is there is consensus that yes. There's not a desire to remove the board, but yes, we want to work on the I G A and make things better.
Thank you. Uh, trustee Hazelton, you have your hand up.
Yeah, I was frantically going back through the um. I G A to see if I could pull it, pull it right up. But um, I just wanted to comment that if we do have a vacant seat on the Visit Estes Park Board currently, it is a town appointed seat. And one um. Thought that I have, and I'd like to just make it publicly here so that the commissioners can hear it as well, knowing that um. That it would be a, a town decision, but a consideration that perhaps a temporary appointment. Of another trustee to that seat may be prudent for, you know, in this interim period while the current Visit Estes Port. Visit Estes Park Board remains and. Visit Estes Park Board remains, and there's this discussion about the IGA, so it's just an idea. I'm not making any sort of motion, but I wanted to state that in the collective body, just as, you know, that makes it so that it's not just me, and that we have additional representation, and could be something for the town board to consider, so that's all.
Good, good point, and in fact, given that I spend most of my time on VEP these days anyway, I'd likely make myself available as one of the trustees to be chosen to do that, but we'll talk about that separately. We have a motion and a second on the table. It appears that we've heard kind of a consensus feel from Chair Stevens in regard to the commissioners, but only the town board can vote on this. I see town administrator Maholic, I was on the verge of doing a roll call vote from the trustees, town administrator.
I'm sorry, Mayor, I believe that there are two active motions on the floor. One is a motion that would require the joint body. There was a motion and a second about the removal. There was a substitute motion to that, but the substitute motion only triggers the town board vote. So I just want to get attorney Kramer's opinion on how to proceed with those two separate issues.
Yeah, it's, you know, this is an unusual situation, but I think where the mayor was headed with it works, that this could be a motion for the town board, and we would take that as a sense of the town board and direction to town staff moving forward. And we, we would have it more as a, a general consensus point of view from the county commissioners as well. And, and that would give us a joint sense moving forward.
Based on that, I would request the town clerk to proceed with the town board roll call vote on the substitute motion. Awaiting the town clerk.
Are you there?
It appears that town clerk Williamson is unmuted.
Mayor, I can help out with this.
Can you restate the, can you restate what we're voting on?
This was the motion from Mayor Protem Sinak, and seconded by trustee Lancaster, that we delay consideration of removal of the full board until we have completed the IGA review.
I'll be ready for that roll call vote, Mayor.
Yes, we are ready.
Mayor Hall?
Agree with the substitute motion.
Mayor Protem Sinak?
Aye.
Trustee Bill Brown? Trustee Kirby Hazelton?
Aye.
Trustee Mark Eigel?
Aye.
Trustee Frank Lancaster?
Aye.
And trustee Cindy Youngland, sorry, Youngland.
Nay.
I heard a five to two, but did I get that right?
That is correct, Mayor.
The motion, the substitute motion passes five to two. I believe that makes it a moot point, town attorney Kramer, on the initial motion. Am I correct?
I think that's correct, Mayor, unless a county commissioner wanted to revive that in some way, it seems like we have the vote of the board on that. The board of trustees.
Based on that, we, we have determined a direction for item three, though it needs a lot more clarity over the next weeks. And we will be looking at getting the appropriate parties to put that together and get it in front of the two bodies and reshape that accordingly. We do not have an item two, the agenda item two becomes moot at this point. So I believe we have covered the actions of this agenda. And I'll refer to town attorney one last time. Is there any additional actions I need to take in this session?
No, Mayor.
I very much appreciate everyone's participation. Commissioners, thanks so much and for staying overtime. And I very much appreciate what trustee Hazelton has done here. She has brought attention to a problem. And I do believe that with this full attention of these two bodies and our staff and our legal staff, that we can move in a much better direction, and we can't lose that sight going forward. There will still be rocky areas, we can navigate it together. So thank you all for your participation. Have a good evening. This session is, is adjourned.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, trustees.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, trustees. Thank you, staff.